Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Row call, please.
Rue Baker.
Here.
Lucas.
Here.
Jeffrey.
Here.
Kaiser.
Kimmons.
Here.
Okay, if there's anyone here that would like to address the council tonight, please fill out the green card located in the foyer in the back there and present it to the clerk. And then whenever the topic you would like to address comes up, please just approach the council. Y'all should have received approval, or excuse me, a copy of the agenda in your packets. Are there any correction changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Some move.
Second.
So a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Also, the council minutes from the last two meetings were included in your packets. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Some moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Recognition of visitors, Mr. Thompson.
No visitors tonight.
Okay. Next is number two.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution expressing support for legislation authorizing the city of Mobiley to impose a sales tax for the purpose of providing revenue for public safety purposes. Ask for it to be read once for consideration.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First and only reading.
A resolution expressing support for legislation authorizing the city of Mobiley to impose a sales tax for the purpose of providing revenue for public safety purposes.
Okay, any, any discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. City Manager, I just wanted to make this clear that, that this is not the city proposing a new tax, that this is just authorizing if we need this down the road for, for emergency purposes and whatnot. I just wanted to make that clear to the public and could you, could you clarify that?
You're right, Councilman Lucas, as stated in the agenda memo, there's no pressing need at this point for us to do that. It had been discussed in the past, but if we are given the authority at the state level, then if the need should arise in the future, then we would have the authority to submit it to a vote.
Thank you.
And that's the only purpose we're doing it now.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, any other discussion? No? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Some move.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution's passed. Number three.
Sir Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing the purchase of fire hoses from Banner Fire Equipment Incorporated for the Mobiley Fire Department. Ask for it to be read once for consideration.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Also, the council minutes from the last two meetings were included in your packets. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Some moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Recognition of visitors, Mr. Thompson.
No visitors tonight.
Okay. Next is number two.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution expressing support for legislation authorizing the city of Mobiley to impose a sales tax for the purpose of providing revenue for public safety purposes. Ask for it to be read once for consideration.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First and only reading.
A resolution expressing support for legislation authorizing the city of Mobiley to impose a sales tax for the purpose of providing revenue for public safety purposes.
Okay, any, any discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. City Manager, I just wanted to, to make this clear that, that this is not the city proposing a new tax, that this is just authorizing if we need this down the road for, for emergency purposes and whatnot. I just wanted to make that clear to the public and could you, could you clarify that?
You're right, Councilman Lucas, as stated in the agenda memo, there's no pressing need at this point for us to do that. It had been discussed in the past, but if we are given the authority at the state level, then if the need should arise in the future, then we would have the authority to submit it to a vote.
Thank you.
And that's the only purpose we're doing it now.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, any other discussion? No? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Some move.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution's passed. Number three.
Sir Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing the purchase of fire hoses from Banner Fire Equipment Incorporated for the Mobiley Fire Department. Ask for it to be read once for consideration.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First and only reading.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of fire hoses from Banner Fire Equipment Incorporated for the Mobiley Fire Department.
Okay, any, any discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Number four.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing the purchase of fire nozzles from Ed M. Feld Equipment Company, Inc. for the Mobiley Fire Department. I ask it to be read once for consideration of passage.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First and only reading.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of fire nozzles from Ed M. Feld Equipment Company Incorporated for the Mobiley Fire Department.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Number five.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an amendment number two to task order number nineteen with Bartlett and West, Inc. supplementing a master agreement dated March third, two thousand twenty, to provide engineering services for phase one of Kiwanis Park. I ask that it be read once for consideration of passage.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First and only reading.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into amendment number two to task order number nineteen with Bartlett and West, Inc. supplementing a master agreement dated March third, two thousand twenty, to provide engineering services for phase one of Kiwanis Park.
Okay, any, any discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the resolution, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Number six.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the city, the treasury of the city of Mobiley, Missouri, pay expenses due between November seventeenth and November twentieth, thirtieth. Ask for it to be read once for consideration.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First and only reading.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Mobiley, Missouri, to pay expenses due between November seventeen, two thousand twenty-three, and November thirty, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of five hundred six thousand, four hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I hereby certify that there is sufficient money standing to the credit of the city of Mobiley, Missouri, unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution. City Treasurer Matthew P. Douglas. Any discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Some move.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. And now under the heading of anything else to come before the council, number seven, almost anyone has that or?
Mr. Mayor, the staff is proposing that in the month of January, we have one council meeting and that be on January sixteen. It's primarily due to holidays and we don't have that much coming for the council, so that's our recommendation, take a motion to do that.
That's a Tuesday, right?
That's a Tuesday because that Monday is a holiday. That's observed by the city.
They'll just need a motion.
Yes, yes.
Need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we change the January council meeting to January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and only have one council meeting that month.
Do we have a motion, is, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? January meetings have been rescheduled. Uh, consideration for approval of a new liquor application.
Mayor and Councilman Brooksie Mavel with MTA ALC, doing business as Boozy Badger, has applied for a new liquor application for six hundred four Con Cannon Street. This application has gone through the required investigation and it's being brought to you for final approval.
Okay, discussion? Any discussion? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the liquor application.
Some move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Application is approved. Uh, number nine, public comments. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? If not, is there anything else to be, come to the regular session of the council? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. To go into work session followed by, uh, closed session.
Do we need a vote on that?
Yes.
Roll call.
Need a roll call?
I was thinking it.
Okay, we got a first and a second, roll call?
Rue Baker?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight to the city council meeting. At this time, I'll open up tonight's work session. Number one. Have a resolution authorizing an agreement with TerraCon to complete a limited site investigation at the Mobiley Industrial Park. Randall?
Mayor, I'd ask the community development director to handle this item, so, Tom?
So this is regarding, you know, we looked at all the areas out there, probably two or three years ago, we acquired the former, uh, property where Shapiro Metals was most likely, most recently at, it was actually separate little three-ish, four or five acre piece there, uh, right next to the biodiesel plant. So, so that is part of the phase one, they're looking at things, just observing if they see anything that sticks out, or if there's anything that is, pops up as far as possible past things like gas stations or things like that tend to trigger a set phase two, while as that was a former asphalt storage facility and then had a metal recycling on it, and also the biodiesel has a pipeline that went over and filled rail cars off and those all threw up flags for them, they're like, we can't approve this without, we don't know there's anything here or see anything obvious, but we need to do some investigative borings. And so that's what they're proposing on that site, is to put three borings on that location and then one just outside the property, the groundwater trend in that area is northeast, so they were looking at one just off the north edge there to see if they show anything, they'll do a ground, a hydro punch down to groundwater level, you know, and then they get nothing out of it and that'll reflect that and will be done.
Okay, uh, I have a question, just curious on the turnaround time on these now?
Uh, if you've got these, the borings could happen at about any time, so we could probably get something, I would think they could get something scheduled in thirty days.
Oh, really? Okay.
These are just like a, like a geo probe, hydro punch, that won't be a, you know, wouldn't take them a day to run up here and do this.
Okay. Any other questions? Are you okay moving this one forward to the next city council meeting? Okay, we'll show this being moved to the next council meeting. Number two. Uh, consideration of two appointments to the Board of Adjustment. Tom, I think that's yours.
Yes, so as you saw there, we had one, a long-term member who didn't put his name back in and then one that did, and then we had one new applicant, so we have two applicants for the positions to be filled.
Richard Drown and Shane Thomas.
I'm sorry, I thought you had their names in the.
I, I think when I was reading through this, uh, somewhere, does one of them live outside of the city?
I believe it's, one does.
Shane Thomas lives in Huntsville.
Yeah.
Does that?
Most all of our boards require that, but I think that one did not have, and we, she looked into that, it doesn't require, does not.
Okay.
But that's, that's of course up to you all to select, I mean, you can say we want that, that's your choice.
Okay.
Doesn't the Board of Adjustments overrule, like if, we have a mandate that says a fence can only be so tall, Board of Adjustments can say, yes, it can be more than that, and I can, I mean, why don't we want a citizen of Mobiley to make that decision as opposed to somebody who doesn't live here? I'm not, I have no, I don't even know Shane Thomas, so this is not a.
Sure.
Anything against the person, I'm asking this a general practice, I mean, I would think you would want a city resident of this community to be on a board that has the power to overrule a rule that has been voted on and approved by the council. Am I wrong?
I don't know that you're wrong, but you may not be right.
Fair enough.
No, I, I understand where you're coming from on that. What's the pleasure here?
I think you make a good point.
And again, this is not against the person, I don't even know the person, so I want to make sure that's clear that I do not know this person.
Right, right.
So I'm speaking as a rule of thumb.
Any thoughts?
I assume he was the only one that applied.
That's correct.
That's probably.
But, I mean, we can, we can continue to advertise and, you know, I mean, so I'm not, that's, that's the two applicants we have at this point.
Well, I think one thing we might consider is that if this is a concern of the council, that we should address maybe our residency, that sort of thing, like we addressed term limits, uh, but I think it's difficult to do that on, on this basis, it brings up the subject of, I don't want to penalize this gentleman.
So you're saying maybe going forward, we ought to look, we ought to look at?
If we have that kind of concern, I think we turn to have something from us.
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood, is, are there two positions open?
Yes, so we, Craig.
And we have two applicants.
One, yes, we have two, there was, one of the persons is asking to be reappointed.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question? May I ask a question? What is the length of the term?
I think it's three years.
My next question, may I ask another question? What is the ramifications if we help postpone this until we can address this with a, a rule? I mean, if we push this back thirty days or till the January sixteen meeting?
They don't need that frequently, and if we do, we still would have four members, so we still, they still be able to.
There would not be any ramifications.
Yeah, no.
I personally, I'd most make a motion that we tabled this until we.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, second, to table this.
But we can approve, uh, Mr. Downs, or Drowns, correct?
Yes.
I mean, he, he is renewing his term in full.
If you want, if you, if that's what everyone wants to, I, I was gonna hold both of them because that way it didn't look like we were singling out somebody, but it's up to you.
We would have three without him.
I understand, I, I know, but I was.
Well, you can do either way, we'll have three without Mr. Drown, so.
If they all show up.
Part.
If they all.
Yeah. And if we have.
I'm, I'm fine with.
Move that one forward. Okay, I'm fine with it.
While we're done.
So. Can I get a motion on, uh, moving Mr. Drown?
Excuse me, I would.
Can I make a point or question?
Just ask if I'm agree with Mr. Drown.
My name is Pam Dahl, I live in eighteen Irwin Dale, here in Mobiley. Can you clarify for the public reference what this board is and exactly what these people do on this board? I saw the, the post on Facebook that you guys were, um, looking for appointments for this board, but I'm not sure the public even knows what this board does or what their function is and why you're needing these candidates, what they do. So if you could clarify that, maybe that would help, uh, bring some more candidates forward to consider for the position. Thank you.
Yes, so Board of Adjustments is listed on our webpage and has full details on there, and I believe when you post it, it has all the information of what their roles, responsibilities are, but we can clarify that and get into detail, I mean, essentially, there are a review board that if there are setbacks or fence heights, things like that, where if somebody shows that there's a unique circumstance and they end up, they bringing that to the Board of Adjustments, uh, that's something they can review, and if they determine there is a unique circumstance, like an odd shaped lot size or, or a hardship placed on that particular, uh, situation, they can make variances and adjust the rules on that circumstance.
Any take to the criteria that you're looking for for that candidate?
Not specifically, no, I mean, if we're looking, I mean, if something, you know, resident of Mobiley, they, I think is the, is the, or is what their council is kind of looking at, but it doesn't require that at this point, it's just looking for someone who will attend the meetings, is community minded and is willing to be, I guess, uh, there are guidelines in the planning and zoning book that you need to follow and be aware of and sort of make your determinations on that.
Okay. Other discussion? Are you okay moving Mr. Drown forward? And then we have a motion and a second to, uh.
Table the second.
Table the next gentleman. So all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next, I have a receipt of bid for plow and spreader.
Yes, so those are for the street department for when the trucks were replacing the F-350s. Uh, the plow is priced at eighty-four oh five and the spreader sixty-eight thirty, and there was two add-ons, like a, our deflector and a light, and I think total, both of those were fifteen thousand, six fifteen fifty-eight, those are budget items, and these are from our, uh, uh, state bid, like, pre-bid contracts.
Okay, any, any questions, discussion? Are you okay moving this one forward? Okay, we'll show this and move forward to next city council meeting. Next, I have receipt of bids for airport farming in year twenty twenty-four.
Yes, we received three bids on that, the prices range from, I think, one eighty-four to two sixteen, two sixteen was the high bid from Mr. Lukey, uh, John Lukey of Franklin Farms, his name, and, uh, that's based on the one hundred and fifty-five acres. We did advertise for a three-year, uh, proposal, and he did submit along with his bid, a, a, a letter stating that, uh, he proposed repairing three large erosional ditches on the property at no cost to the city, you know, for a five-year agreement, and that wasn't part of our terms, so, but, and I haven't had a chance to contact Mr. Lukey yet personally to talk to him about that further to see if he's willing to do that for the three-year term.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Jeffrey?
So if we accepted a five-year, that would be the same contract terms.
Just longer length of time.
That's the only thing that would be changing, the rest of it, the, the prepayment date.
Right.
All that would still be our contract, correct?
That's. Yes, additionally, the cost, I mean, we haven't done a cost on that, but we were looking at having do some pretty significant work out in that area to repair those erosional channels, so it's a, it's a fairly decent value of work that needs to be done out there on the erosion that these suggest.
It's a very, very good price for per acre, I've never seen one that high.
Okay, any other questions? Are you okay moving this one? Okay, we'll show that, we're gonna move this forward to the next city council meeting. Number five, downtown park, parking study, Mr. Sanders.
So we had originally the first price I quoted, she gave you from McQ, uh, McClure, it was twenty-nine thousand nine, just under thirty thousand, and then I talked to Walker, who also kind of specializes in that, and they had given us a bid for twenty-six and some change, I believe, and I said, let's pare this down, and I said, what if, what would you be able to do, just a aerial overview of our downtown, and based on that, look at the parking spaces, the facilities there, and provide a space sizing structure, not worry about parking lots and future needs, just on what's the best layout based on the size of the streets, parallel angles of parking, things like that, and that's where they quoted us, like, seventy-three hundred dollars.
Quite a difference.
Well, again, that's not a site visit.
Right.
And that's an aerial diagram, and that's taking several components, that's like the future, the parking lot studies, what are our future needs, on-street enforcement type things, all that, this is just parking space layout.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I wonder.
Mr. Lucas?
What, what were you going to get for the third, or I'm sorry, for the twenty-nine thousand, what were we gonna get for that that we're not getting for this? Can you just clarify that?
I'll try, that's where we're looking at the, uh, parking lots that, you know, that we have now, they were gonna come down and do an assessment and look at the housing needs and then the growth, do a stu, review of the housing in downtown, how much what we anticipated growth is gonna be, what our projected needs would be for that, and see if we wanted to acquire more lots, if we had adequate spacing on that now, also they're gonna look and do a study, like, do some surveys, watch traffic for a few days, do some counts on traffic flows, and that's when you really get them on-site and being present, you know, really brings up your costs, so those studies would be what, would run that up, but they, where we'd have better traffic counts and they could say, we have adequate parking spaces, or we need to look at acquiring more off-street parking, and we need to look at enforcing our two-hour and pushing those overnight people out to the, those parking lots versus on the street.
Is, is this seventy-three hundred that you're proposing, is this, will this be beneficial enough?
I think that addresses exactly what you all are asking about specifically, about the parking sizes, you know, you're talking about the narrowness of, of having long trucks parked in there, this would address, what's it gonna take based on the type of vehicles we're commonly seeing and that, you know, that we're seeing on the roads nowadays, to not have lanes that are pinched down so tight that two cars can't meet, you know, you know, we talked about higher angle parking spaces, for example, of moving maybe to a higher pitch, and so, things you have to think about is, that's also gonna reduce your, you, if you skew those over, it's gonna broaden your spaces to maintain the nine feet, so you still lose that, and maybe it's better to go to parallel parking, so those are the kind of things they'll look at, or adjusting the curbs back, I mean, there's no end to where you can go on this, though.
Sure, but from my perspective, and I was, I was the only one that was against it last, uh, last meeting when it came up, and I, uh, I, I think I'm still against the spending the twenty-nine thousand right now, just because of the, the changes, but I would, I would be in favor of the. But I would, I would be in favor of the, of the lesser amount to, to get us by for now until we see these significant changes downtown. So I would reverse my, my opposition to, to the parking study if we went this route. That's just my personal opinion.
That's what you're suggesting, right?
I'm just bringing to another example. I'm saying if we, just to pinch down and not broaden the scope over what your original concerns were, which was the narrowness of the lane. So I said, let's focus completely on that, no site visit and see if that covers your all needs.
Okay.
Concerns.
Any other questions? Are you okay moving this one forward? Okay, we'll show that we move this forward to the next city council meeting. Number six, proposal for Moberly Wayfinding Implementation. Tom, send.
I was gonna have Russell Dow on here from Arturis to kind of answer your, any questions you might have. And I apologize, I didn't get that lined up. So, I mean, I talked to him about it, but didn't get it on the list, call in. But we've done the study on this. We have this type of signs laid out, the locations of the signs as far as what, I should say, the locations as far as what areas we want to identify, but not necessarily where they'll be placed. You know, how big the sign's gonna be at that location, what's the exact layout? You know, so getting those, all those specifications put together and run it through the construction and overseeing that is what they're proposing at this time. And so that's what this is, to get those bid packs put together, put out for bid, oversee the bidding, you know, contacting people they know that do this kind of stuff as well as our local people and getting prices on that and then making sure they're put in appropriately and in the right locations. And that's what that proposal's for. So again, it's a split cost, forty twenty twenty with Parks CID and City. And I've talked to Parks and CID and they're ready to move forward with that if you're happy.
Okay, questions?
I just wanted to, just wanted to clarify that you'd said that the, the local people do get an opportunity to bid, correct? That they're gonna reach out to them?
Yeah. I mean, if, if, I don't know how complex the signs are for their operation. So we'll, we'll just have to give them bid packs and sure we'll notify them.
I think as long as they're given the opportunity, I think that's.
I've already mentioned it to some that I've just happened to run into, so I mean, but we'll definitely get them bid packs when they're done.
Absolutely. Gotta support our local people.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Are you okay moving this one forward? Okay, we'll show that we're gonna move this one forward to the next city council meeting. Number seven, grant administration of EDA grant for Moberly Industrial Park. Mr. Sanders.
This is a fifteen thousand dollar fee with Mark Twain Council of Governments. They are, have worked very close with us to get all these things lined up. And so this would be just for the EDA component of it, which is the one point five million dollar grant we most recently got. But they would also assist us as part of this, but it's only funded out of the EDA portion of that and it is reimbursable with the grant.
Any questions? None? Are you okay moving this one forward? Okay, we'll show that this is gonna be moved forward to the next city council meeting. Anything else to come before the work session?
I couldn't.
Mr. Kimmens?
Addressing the point that was raised here about the duties of each of these committees, boards, et cetera. And I have to admit, I haven't looked at our website to see if they're there, but would there be a way to put those boards and whatever on the website with a brief synopsis of what their intent and purpose is?
Sure, I, I think that's already existed.
Is it on there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's already on there.
Well, see, if I'm not looking at it, I guess nobody else.
Well, I mean, it's not, it's not, unless, unless you had an interest into that specific thing. Like when we posted, for example, you know, I mean, I, I believe that I, she's indicated that she's not sure. We will make sure I advertise in the future with what are the duties of this. And when, I know we put the meeting times and the terms and things like that, but I'll make sure that the duties are also included.
She just checked and there is a description.
There is, okay. Thank you for checking for that. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved.
Say the motion, a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Closed session.